Good evening. I call the August 13th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland II Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
I move to approve the agenda for the August 13th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Washington to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote.
Madam Chair, I'll need a hand vote.
We can take a hand vote. Those in favor? Six... Are you in favor? Okay. Five yes, one no. The motion passes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to request that you ask those that are not in favor to raise their hands so that it's noted for the record.
Thank you for that suggestion, but we'll move forward. Executive session. We will move to item 3.1, Executive Session. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
I move to convene in Executive Session for the purpose of discussing a personal matter regarding the superintendent's evaluation and contract modifications and employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs... Who's second? Mrs. McFadden to go into Executive Session. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. Those in favor, raise your hand. Five yes, those opposed. The motion is five yes, one opposed. The motion passes. The board will now enter into Executive Session. May I have a motion to end Executive Session?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move that we end Executive Session at 6:23 PM and resume public session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Nash to end Executive Session at 6:23 PM and resume public session. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. Mrs. Agostini, are you able to vote?
I need to raise my hand at this point.
Okay, absolutely.
I vote on the affirmative.
Ms. Washington, is the motion correct? Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will resume public session. We will now move into the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Tamika Washington will present us with this inspirational moment for this evening. Mrs. Washington?
Thank you, Madam trustee... Excuse me. Madam Chair.
That's too much macaroni and cheese in the back, y'all.
All right. There... Yes, there we go. All right. So tonight's inspirational moment is Tyler Alexander Shuler. He is a film and creative director who tells stories through visual format. The Spring Valley graduate, class of 2022, has gained notoriety from his narrative films, music videos, and creative campaigns ranging from jewelry to fashion, all while studying film and television at the Savannah College of Art and Design in Atlanta, Georgia, and while remaining on the dean's list. I now present to you Tyler Alexander Shuler.
Embrace your inner child and watch your dreams run wild. I'm gonna give you guys a little bit of a story. I've always been a storyteller. I've always been a creative kid. From sunup to sundown, I was glued to a page of a Percy Jackson book. You could not rip me off of that book. And then it moved when I discovered the visual format in the fourth grade. And I started my first YouTube channel. I didn't have a camera, but I had an iPad. And I didn't have a tripod, but my brother and I, we set up boxes on top of each other so we can get the angle that we wanted. It wasn't the equipment that mattered. It was the story that mattered. The scarcity of our equipment prompted the innovation of our creativity. That's embracing my inner child. Embracing my inner child has led to accomplishments such as my short film, No Man's Notebook, being featured at a film festival in London. Embracing my inner child has led to a music video that I directed being showcased in Times Square. It's led to a short that I traveled all the way to Los Angeles to direct, amassing millions of views. Creative directing an album that Spotify quoted to be one of the best albums of 2022. This opened up the realm for me to move into fashion where I've now directed a jewelry campaign. And I've done this all with friends and family, with my own company that I founded, 3229 Co., all while pursuing my degree in film and television at the Savannah College of Art and Design on the dean's list for two consecutive years. But some things can be better shown than told. I don't want to be heard. I want to be understood. Everyone's denied me. They said I need some sort of proof that I live here. We need an address. I'd like to rush to work. Thank you. So... As I close, don't let the limitations, the fear of others' opinions, get in the way of your dream. If I would have listened to the nonbelievers, I wouldn't be here where I am now, so far at 20. Your childlike stubbornness is sometimes your inner child's dreams. So embrace your inner child and watch your dreams run wild. Thank you so much.
Are you gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I was practicing that the whole night. Now stand with the pledge. Are you ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you so much for that. And then he's wearing a Spring Valley jacket, so kudos. We like that. Great leaders. This is our future, guys. That's our future. We're gonna start with special recognition. The agenda item in this section is a special recognition of the superintendent's new cabinet members and new principals. Dr. Moore. And what I would do, I'll ask all board members to join me at the front, please.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna ask that our deputy superintendent, Dr. Franklin, introduce our special guest tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Madam Chair, members of the board, it's my absolute pleasure to introduce to you some individuals who are leading our schools this year, who were not leading schools last year, our new principals. And then we also have three members of a superintendent's cabinet who are new to that group. And so as I called your name, if you would come forward, we will begin with Dr. Scott Floyd, principal at E.L. Wright Middle School. And he is coming to E.L. Wright from being an AP at Summit Parkway Middle School. Dr. Miranda Hayward, principal at Lonnie B. Nelson Elementary School, coming from AP at Forest Lake Elementary School. Dr. Tia Jones at Cotaba Trail Elementary School. She's now serving as principal, has previously served as AP at Cotaba Trail. Mr. Leonard MacLeod, principal of Bethel Hanbury Elementary School, coming to us from Oak Point Elementary in Lexington, Richland 5. Ms. Dawn Smith, she's serving as principal at Bookman Road Elementary School. She previously served as AP at Sandlapper Elementary School. Dr. Marlin Thomas, principal of Richland Northeast High School. He's previously served as principal at Lamar High School. Mr. William Whitehurst is serving as principal of Condor Elementary School. He previously served as principal at Marshall Elementary School in the Orangeburg County School District. And lastly, in the principal ranks, Mr. Alan Wolfe. He's serving as director of the R2I2 Student Innovation Center. He previously served as an AP at Ridgeview High School. All right. Now, our next set of individuals are new members of the superintendent's cabinet. Mr. Mark Sims, our district ombudsman, previously served as principal of Richland Northeast High School. Mrs. Darcy Rush, our senior chief communications officer... Hold up. Senior key to communications officer. She's coming to us from W L T X. And lastly, Ms. Jennifer Morrison, our senior chief academic officer. She is coming to us from Rock Hill School District where she served as secondary executive director.
We would give time for everyone who needs to exit, okay? We're going to continue with item 6.1, Consent Agenda. No, that's not... Should we do that? Yes, that's correct. We will now move to item 6.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter?
I move to approve the consent agenda for the August 13th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved by Mrs. Porter, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any... No. Mrs. Nash, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Okay. Please check the motion. Is it correct? Board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to public participation. We have one individual has signed up to address the board. You will be given three minutes to address the board. To assist with timing, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red and you will hear a tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Before we begin, I will remind you that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy B E D H, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other persons connected with the school system. Specific students or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedure and indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during the public participation will be referred to a staff member for response at a later time. The first person we have, and the only person we have up to speak, is Minister Musafa.
Good evening. Chairman, Boyd. It's been maybe a couple of years now since I've been here. Congratulations to the new board members. Hello, Ms. Lindsay, and hello, Dr. Monica. I know these two, but congratulations to you all. I'm here today... First, let me... Your slogan is "Purpose Driven, Future Ready." Last time I came up here, I was talking about the same thing, addressing the same thing, which is, are we on the path yet ensuring that every child, every child, every student are career-ready and on grade level? That is a concern that we have. We, the community, have. Is every child on grade level? Is every child, when they graduate, are they career-ready? We're talking about, I think, that the district serves over 28,000 students. We have over $386 million budget. So there's no reason at all that every child should be on grade level. Now, I went on the South Carolina School Report card, and I was kind of confused. I pull up Ridgeview. Academic achievement for Ridgeview was below average. Preparing for success, below average. Multilingual learning project, below average. Graduation rate, excellent. That's a red flag for me. How can that possibly be excellent? College and career-ready, excellent. How can that possibly be if everything else is below average? Are we doing the benchmark assessments? What are we doing? I went up onto the elementary school, and it was the same thing. Wright's, Wright's elementary. Academic achievement, below average. Malinga learner progress, good. Student progress, below average. School climate, unsatisfactory. Very problematic for me. Very problematic for us. So as Nestor Mandela would say, and he stated clearly, he said, "Our children are the rock of which our future would be built, our greatest asset as a nation, as a nation." He also said that men and women comes in gold. Many don't even leave their names behind. We have a responsibility when we in positions, all of us, all of us, regardless if we in positions or not, we have a responsibility, especially when it comes to the greatest asset, which is the children. So that's why I'm here today, is to address the same thing that I addressed a couple of years ago, ensuring that all of our children are on grade level. All of them graduate, and they are career-ready. I seen CTE has programs, which is good, but most of the community don't really know all about the program, so we need to do better with that, too. So again, we're talking about the future of our children, and we have the funds, we have more degrees in day than we ever have, so there's no excuse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister Musafa. We will now move to voting on Executive Session items. Item 8.1. May I have... May I please have a motion of the personnel matter regarding the superintendent's evaluation and contract modifications?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
In light of the superintendent's positive performance evaluation, I move that the board amend the superintendent's contract as follows. Number one, extend the contract for one year through June 30th, 2027. Number two, provide that the superintendent may accrue and carry over up to 90 vacation days and be paid for those days upon separation at her daily rate for the 2023-2024 school year for the first 24 days, and $100 per day for all the remaining days, up to the maximum of 90 days. Number three, clarify liability insurance coverage for the superintendent. And number four, increase the annuity contribution to 3%.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Wait, one second. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs.
I would like to say that Ms. Porter said 2%, 3%. We need it to say by 3%.
Mrs. Porter, would you please reread your motion, please?
Yes, I was gonna correct that once you asked me if I read correctly. So at the last line, number four...
If you would just start over and just read it for the public.
In light of the superintendent's positive performance evaluation, I move that the board amend the superintendent's contract as follows. Number one, extend the contract for one year through June 30th, 2027. Number two, provide that the superintendent may accrue and carry over up to 90 vacation days and be paid for those days upon separation at her daily rate for the 2023-2024 school year for the first 24 days, and $100 per day for all the remaining days, up to the maximum of 90 days. Number three, clarify liability insurance coverage for the superintendent. And number four, increase the annuity contribution by 3%.
Motion, Mrs. Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter, seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? If not, Mrs. Porter, if you would check the motion, see if it's correct.
It's correct. We have some spacing that's not there, but other than that, everything's correct.
Board members, please vote. The motion, the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. With that, I will read a statement by the chair for the superintendent's evaluation. During Executive Session earlier this evening, the board completed its evaluation of the performance of our superintendent during the 2023-2024 school year. The board is pleased to report that Dr. Moore received a favorable evaluation, and we are very excited about the direction in which Dr. Moore is leading our district. And particularly, the board appreciates Dr. Moore's hard work and dedication in overseeing the district financial resources so that as much money as possible directly benefits our students in the classroom. We also commend Dr. Moore for her commitment to ensuring students and staff are safe and secure in the school environment. We look forward to working together with Dr. Moore as we continue to implement strategies to improve academic achievement for all of our students, particularly in areas where our test scores are not where we would like for them to be. We also believe that student success is impacted by participation from all stakeholders, including public and private business and organizations. And we will continue to support Dr. Moore as she develops and strengthens those partnerships. In conclusion... In conclusion, we thank you, Dr. Moore, for a job we're done. Are there any comments you would like to make?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I would just like to say to the board, thank you for being partners in this work. I believe over the course of this year, we have done some great things for our students, for our district, and for our community. And that work only takes place when we are working together as we have done this past year. We have been partners in that work and I want the community to understand that this really is a partnership between the superintendent and the board. I want to give a very special thank you to the previous board chair, Mr. Trapp, because he worked with me over the year, provided lots of wisdom and guidance and direction and support, as well as all of the board members. But as you know, Madam Chair, you talked, we talk a lot as superintendent and chairperson, and I know that this year, we're going to even do better than we did last year. It's going to be a great year. As I said at our convocation, this will be the best year in the history of Richland Two School District. So thank you.
Item 8.2, employment recommendations and certified releases. We did not have any tonight because we voted on that at our special call board meeting. So we're going to move to item 9.0, new business, no action required, requested. Dr. Moore, we will move to 9.1, magnet program update. The agenda item in this session is an update of the magnet program. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would like to call up Ms. Barbara Turner. Mrs. Barbara Turner, our Director of Magnet Programs. And Mrs. Turner for the board, I know you're aware of this, but for the public, Mrs. Turner was recently selected as the Region Fourth Director for Magnet Schools of America, which is a great honor to be selected to represent and lead the region for us and being a part of our program. This update that's going to be provided by Ms. Turner is at the request of a board member, but you know, we're always very proud to talk about the great work that we do in our magnet programs to meet the diverse needs of our students. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Turner.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, our superintendent, Dr. Moore. Thank you for having me this evening. I will get started on our magnet program update. Okay, just to give you a little bit of background, our first magnet program started at Dent Middle School back in 1991, the Learning Collaborative, but since then, we have expanded to include 38 magnet programs. We have many magnet themes that range from everything to STEM, the arts, convergence media, you name it, we've got it. And there are four elementary magnet centers, 11 school-wide magnets, and 23 school-within-a-school magnet programs. And just to give you a little bit of insight on what those mean, our magnet centers, we have four magnet centers in our school district. The magnet centers, there are smaller learning community centers that sit on middle school campuses, and we have four of those. Center for Knowledge sits on the campus of EL Wright Middle. Center for Knowledge North sits on the campus of Muller Road Middle. Center for Inquiry sits on the campus of Summit Parkway. And Center for Achievement sits on the campus of Kelly Mill Middle. Our school-within-a-school magnet programs are our smaller learning communities within a large school environment. And then our school-wide magnet service, all of our schools, all of our students who attend. We have lottery-based and selective magnet programs. And I'm going to, I'm going to echo the sentiments of our inspirational moment presenter, Mr. Schuler, and say, some things are better shown than said, and give you a video.
Welcome to Richland School District Two, where innovation meets excellence and where every student has the opportunity to thrive in a purpose-driven and future-ready environment. Our magnet programs are designed to provide students with unique opportunities to explore their interests and passions while receiving a high-quality education. With 37 lottery-based and selective magnets, we offer a diverse range of specialized programs to cater to every student's needs and aspirations.
From the very beginning, we were always interested in finding a unique space that would have characteristics that were really important to us, those being patience with learning, a small environment, an intimate learning experience, a comprehensive kind of holistic approach to learning, believing that all students have the capacity and the ability to grasp the information. They just may need to receive it in different ways, they may need more time to reflect on it, they may need a little more time to wrestle with it. But there's a strong, I think, ethic of patience that comes here with, with all of the professionals that work here that has been really essential for my side.
The magnet program has helped out with like me academically because it's taught me so many different things, like how the design thinking process can help you in everyday life and how it just, how it applies to so many different things, not just like products and other things. You can use it in ELA, in math, in science, in social studies. I learned to use it in so many different areas.
This has been not only a good support, but also pushed me towards things that I wouldn't have known about. With my magnet director, Ms. Walker, she has been able to give us so many different tools and opportunities from different camps, programs, and internships so we can choose from that can help us with our resume and things that can help benefit us later in life.
Whether your child is interested in STEM, the arts, humanities, or leadership, we have a magnet program tailored just for them.
Husband is an engineer and I myself was a microbiologist, so having our kids in STEM was really interesting to us. So we wanted her to try out for that and we thought it would be very engaging and more challenging for her because she is very smart and we wanted something that was more challenging for her.
Our programs are nationally certified by Magnet Schools of America and some are demonstration magnet schools, which serve as innovation laboratories for others to learn from across the country. Richland School District Two has been honored with numerous awards from Magnet Schools of America, including the Donna Grady Career District Award for Magnet Sustainability, National Magnet Principal and Teacher of the Year Awards, and various merit awards of excellence and distinction. Discover the endless possibilities awaiting your child in Richland School District Two's magnet programs, where they can be purpose-driven and future-ready. Enroll today and unlock your child's full potential.
And just to give you some enrollment data, school-wide and school-within-a-school enrollment, that's a three-year period. If you notice, for our school-wide magnet, we took our school-wide magnet programs, we took a little dip in 2022-23, but we picked it back up in 23-24 last year and we're headed on a trajectory to keep pushing those numbers up. And then our school-within-a-school enrollment stayed pretty steady. And so the timeline for those considering magnet programs, magnet programs are one of four choice options in our school district. And so we kick off choice season with a choice fair that's usually held in October. And then we advertise in many ways, our parent square, through media, radio media, video media, social media. We send out a mailer, different ways that we communicate to our families so that they're aware that our application process will be available to them during our choice process. And then we hold school information nights at each of our schools so that those who are interested in particular schools or programs have an opportunity to go to each school to get school tours and learn more extensive information about those programs. Some of our programs, we have lottery-based, and then we also have selective-based programs, which require an interview. Our selections are done typically in February, and late February is when parents can log back into the system and find out what their choice selections are. These are some more of our magnet accolades. You've heard some of them in the video. These are from Magnet Schools of America, which is our national professional development organization that we look to, to help us define what high-quality magnet programs look like. So we have 33 nationally certified magnet programs in our district. Out of those 33 nationally certified programs, 22 are demonstration magnets that serve as innovation laboratories where other people can come and learn from across the country. We were awarded the, in 2023, the National Magnet Teacher of the Year from Muller Road, that was Emily Everlin. The National Magnet Principal of the Year in 2019, that was our Executive Director, Dr. Sabrina Suver, who was at the time, principal of Richland Northeast High School. We've had our new and emerging school of excellence, Sandlapper, in 2022. Top 20 national schools of excellence in 2020, Spring Valley Discovery and Explorations. 2024 was Spring Valley and Ridgeview Med Pro Magnet. And then we've had some other merit of excellence and distinction awards. What questions do you have for me?
So thank you, Mrs. Turner. Board members, we are very proud of our magnet programs, but I do want to let the public know that we offer a quality education in every school. The purpose of the magnet is to tap into a student's potential or what a student thinks they might want to pursue as a career, would like a more focused, structured program. But each of our schools offers a great education for students. So we'll open it up for questions.
Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. McFadden.
I do have a question, Ms. Turner. So I have a friend who has a three-year-old daughter and she asked me about what she needs to do now to stop preparing her child for picking a certain school, a certain magnet school. So what would you say for parents who have young children before elementary age? What's the process that they should take to start looking into different schools? And if they find a school, how should they go about applying?
I always tell parents they know their child best. And so to determine, and especially at that age, it's really hard to determine what their interests in particular may be, but I always encourage them to attend the choice fair. As I mentioned, that kicks off choice season for us during the choice fair. We have all of our schools and programs available. They have tables set up to ask, to answer the questions from our parents. They have brochures available. And so that's a good way for her to compare one school to another to determine what's going to be the best for her child.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this isn't a question, this is a comment. And this is not to brag about myself, but to brag about the magnets in Richland Two. That's what brought my kids out of private school, were the magnets of Richland Two. My youngest daughter was dyslexic, is dyslexic and ADHD, and she went to Center for Achievement. And because they taught her to learn how she can learn, she's finishing up her final year of college. And she got, I will just say this, a 1,300 on her SAT, which is phenomenal for a kid who for years was working two years below grade level. My son came, and for those, when I was running for school board, this is sort of what I told the story of, but my son, who went to TLC from private school, it was not cool to be smart at his school. But when he got to TLC, the Learning Collaborative, it was uncool not to be smart and not to do your homework. So that's what I loved about TLC is it was cool for boys to be smart. And he is now finishing up his first year of medical residency in Seattle. And then for my final one, and my daughter Tori, who did TLC, she also did discovery, but she was transferred two years ago from Chicago to Copenhagen, Denmark, where she's in supply chain management. So I am the biggest supporter and so fond. I love all of our schools, but I'm so grateful for all that the magnets provided to the Agostini children. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Thank you. Board members, any other questions or comments? Mrs. Washington?
I have two questions. So thank you so much for the presentation and giving us the updates. Are there any plans to expand any of our programs in the near future?
There hadn't been any conversations, but usually if a principal has an idea about a particular theme or program they want to implement at their school, they reach out to the district office and they may submit a proposal and then we take it from there.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question, I know that we have several magnet programs like law that may be at several different campuses. But if a child did not have transportation, is this something that we're going to consider in the future, providing transportation for students for our magnet programs? Now, I understand that is a massive intake, but is it something that you all have noticed as a barrier for some students? And what are just some of the things that we're thinking about future-wise to be able to, so that all students can have access to those opportunities?
I'm so glad you asked that question. We had, well, during the summer, I pulled together a group of partners. It included lead teachers, principals, community members, business partners, and we talked about what we call a magnet blueprint. And one of the, one of the things that came up was transportation. And so we are, we would like to explore the opportunity with the board's support of reviewing, pulling together another task force to talk about transportation, because the last study was done in 2015. So it is time to bring that conversation up again. It is expensive, which was what the result of the 2015 report was, you know, the cost to pull that off. But I've been talking to some of my counterparts in other states and they have hubs and they're able to do it in that, in that way. And so I would love for us to explore how we can provide transportation, because magnets were started for access, equal access for all students. And if we're going to provide equal access, what better way to do it than to provide transportation?
Thank you. I look forward to that.
Yes. Board members, any other questions? Mrs. Porter?
Yes, are all of our magnet programs full after enrollment, after the enrollment process?
We may have a few with one or two seats available because we have a choice one session in the fall and then choice two in spring. And then we, sometimes we're still filling seats in the summertime for those, especially military families moving in or those from out of state. And so it's very rare that we have some seats available, but from time to time, we do have one or two seats, depending on what program. Some programs fill up faster than others, so it just depends on the program.
And then I'm also curious about vacancies as far as employment interest and so forth and working in a, for a magnet school. Do we see some of the same concerns or typically do we fill those spaces quickly within?
Yeah, the teacher shortage is real, so the magnet programs are not, we're not obsolete to the teacher shortage at all.
Board members, any other questions? If not, I do have a question. I know that some of the magnet programs are lottery-based in choice, as you stated earlier. So if there is a parent who actually had a child in the choice program and there's a sibling, can that sibling automatically be placed in the choice program?
It's not automatic, but there is sibling priority.
Can you kind of explain that so the public?
So for example, if, if the lottery is run and then the, one of the children was able to make the, because the lottery is a computer-generated lottery system. So each student is assigned a number. And so say for example, especially with school-wide magnets, they utilize, there's a formula that's a net 20-plus. And what net 20-plus means is there's a possibility that that school can take 20 students plus any students that they may lose through choice. Hope I'm explaining that right, Cleve. And then, and then, so if there's a sibling, when we run the lottery, each student is assigned a number through the computer. And if one sibling was able to get in, the other sibling was not, that other sibling could be put on a wait list. And then typically what happens is someone doesn't accept a spot when it's the parent notification period and that sibling tends to get in. And the parent may call and say, oh, one of my children got in and the other one did not. We find a way to, to make it so the parent doesn't have to go to two different schools, especially for elementary kids.
Thank you so much because we do, or at least I'll speak for myself, get those calls. So that's why I wanted you to explain that.
We had about three of those this summer and we were able to work it out because lots of times, parents apply, they, but then they'll decline a spot. So like I said, the sibling that's waiting tends to get that spot because they're, that's where the sibling priority comes into play.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Turner.
You're welcome.
We do appreciate it. We're going to continue to move to item 9.2, administrative.
We're going to continue to move to item nine point two, Administrative Rule Revision Proposal, BD dash R, Organization of the Board. The agenda item in this session is a policy revision proposal regarding the administrative rule, Organization of the Board. Dr. Franklin will present the proposed revisions to the board. Dr. Franklin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, District Administration in collaboration with Trustee McFadden reviewed administrative rule BDR, Organization of the Board, with a particular focus on the role of the secretary. So I call your attention to the last section of the administrative rule entitled Duties of the Secretary. Richland was very fortunate to employ a full-time office professional who provides clerical support to the board. And so in that first sentence, in that last section, we realized that the board secretary does not record the proceedings of the board meetings. The office professional does. However, we inserted a suggestion that we clarify that it still remains the responsibility of the board secretary to ensure the accuracy of recorded minutes. For example, it was noted tonight that there was some spelling or some spacing issues in one of the motions. And so as the board secretary, she will collaborate with our office professional to ensure that the minutes are accurate in terms of content and grammatical spelling issues before the minutes are proposed or presented at the next meeting for approval. A second suggestion is the third bullet that has been inserted in the administrative rule is to specify that the board secretary, in the absence of the chairman and vice chairman, would serve as presiding officer of a meeting. It's probably very rare that that will happen, but it does give us specificity as to what we will do in the event of the absence of both the chairman and vice chairman from a board meeting. So those were the two changes in our collaboration that we arrived at and are proposing to the board for consideration. And then we also received two other items to consider, so I want to share those with the board as well. And so these came in this morning, so it's not reflected in the draft. So in Policy BEC, Executive Sessions and Open Meetings, there's a sentence in the second paragraph which reads, "If such vote is favorable, the secretary will then announce the specific purpose of executive session," which will be reflected in the minutes. And so there was a recommendation that we insert that sentence from Policy BEC into the administrative-
Madam Chair, point of order. And I appreciate what you're doing, but we're supposed to be, the item on the agenda is Policy BD?
Yes.
And not moving on to other policies?
She's adding to that policy. She's not moving-
Oh, you're adding to this policy?
Yes.
Right. So the suggestion- Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't understand. So you're adding to the policy that we're currently working at?
Yes. So after this was provided and board-
All right. Thank you.
Sorry I missed that. It's okay. There is a sentence in Policy BEC that specifies that the secretary will announce the specific purpose of executive session and will ensure that that's reflected in the minutes. So the suggestion was to also add that sentence to Policy B, I'm sorry, Administrative Rule BDR. Now, currently, our practice is the person who makes the motion to go into executive session has been stating the purpose of the board going into executive session, because it's a part of the motion. And then the second suggestion that we received was indicating that signing of district, the secretary will sign district documents as needed. Dr. Moore, that concludes the presentation of Administrative Rule BDR, Organization of the Board.
Madam Chair, we'll open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you. I support the addition of the board secretary, you know, making the motion. That's been a practice that we've had for years since I've been on the board, for going into executive session. And that would be terrific to see in the policy. I do have a concern about the board's secretary signing documents on behalf of the board, because as it is on behalf of the board, in my opinion, that would be the chairman's responsibility, to speak on behalf of the board, to sign on behalf of the board, and not the secretary. There are some documents that, for example, bond documents where the chair and the secretary do have to sign, and that's required by law. But it has been our practice and in policy for the board chair to speak on behalf of the board.
Board members, any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. McFadden?
Yes, so that's why I wanted to, that's why I wanted to add the signature, because here it doesn't say that the signature needs to be done at all. So just to add, like what you said, that's what it said, "as needed." But I requested a list of the different types of documents that the secretary is supposed to sign. But it's fluid. So that's why I put on there, "as needed," because right here, it's not saying, and this is for future as well, because when new board members come on, the secretary position, it doesn't state that they will be signing anything. So just to kind of put that in there for them to understand that you will be signing some types of documents. And I know that you said there was law somewhere. So if we could probably, in the administrative rule, just kind of put that in there. Thank you.
I also want to note, under Duties of Chairman, it mentions the signatory authority of the chairman. And then Bullet Two may cover what Mrs. McFadden is addressing, because the secretary prepares reports or performs such duties as may be prescribed by statutes or at the direction of the chairman. So, for example, if there is a letter that the board needs to send to a parent in response to a grievance, the chair may say, please have the secretary sign the letter. And so that type of duty is covered in the administrative rule as it is.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. We will now move to item ten point zero, Agenda Items for Next Meeting. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is August 27th of 2024. The board meeting will be conducted and called to order, followed by executive session at 5:30 PM. Public session would begin at 6:30 PM. The order of the agenda is, the first item is the call to order, followed by the approval of the agenda. The board will then move into executive session. During executive session, we'll discuss student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, breach of contracts, employment recommendations, and certified releases. The board will release back to public session at 6:30 PM. We will then have our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, followed by special recognition of the South Carolina School Board Association Boardsmanship. Then move to the consent agenda, which would include approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes from the previous meeting, and classified employment releases and in-district transfers. We will then move to public participation, followed by voting on executive session items, which would include student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, breach of contracts, employment recommendations, and certified releases, and as needed for items discussed in executive session. We would then move to new business, no action requested. The board will receive a fourth-quarter pupil services report. This will close out the school year of 2023, 2024. We'll then move to reviewing the draft agenda for the September 10th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting, and move after that to if-needed items, which would include public participation, executive session, voting on executive session, and then conclude with board and superintendent comments and adjournment.
Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the next meeting agenda or to our future agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Trapp?
I move that we add, we add a first reading of Policy JHCV, Release Time for Religious Instructions, to the August 27th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Just for a point of clarification, Dr. Franklin, I need your assistance.
Yes.
And you are a parliamentarian. So I need your help. Changed that word. Based on what Mr. Trapp asked to add to the agenda, the last time that was on the agenda, it failed. But it's my understanding that it can only be brought back up if it was someone who voted against that. Am I correct, before we move on with that motion?
Okay. If the item, if the vote was to remove the item from the agenda of that meeting, it could be brought back up in any meeting. If the vote was to, like to table that item or to dismiss the item, then it can only be brought back up by someone who voted against at that time.
Right. So at that moment, we cannot, because it was voted, to be dismissed. So, Mr. Trapp, based on what you're asking, unfortunately, it can only be brought back to the agenda from someone who actually voted against it. So if you could get someone who voted-
Madam Chair, if I may, if I may, may point out that-
Absolutely.
Dr. Franklin just pointed out that it was removed from that particular agenda, which means it's, it can be put back on the agenda at any given time. It was removed before the meeting, at a September, what, September-
Was it removed?
Yes, it was.
Mr. Madam-
Wait, wait, Mrs. Agostini. Mr. Trapp, before we do that, we're going to need clarification. So I'm going to recess this meeting. I'm going to take a ten-minute recess to make sure we're in compliance, and then we'll come back. So, board members, we're going to take a ten-minute recess. So on September 12th, 2023, there was a motion, but it was to remove item eight point one, Release Time for Religious Instruction from the Agenda. So therefore, Mr. Trapp, you are able to make a motion. And if there's a second, we will move forward for a previous agenda. Thank you. Future agenda. So, Mr. Trapp, if you would make that motion?
Make it again? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I move that we add a first reading of Policy JHCV, Release Time for Religious Instruction, to the August 27th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to add the Release Time for Religious Instructions to the agenda for a future board meeting. Oh.
The motion was to add it to the August 27th, 2024-
I do apologize. Okay. For the August 27th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting. Now, Mr. Trapp, is there a second? We've already done a second? Before we move forward, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mrs. Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I didn't realize, I didn't mean to kind of excite everybody there. Let me, let me clarify-
You woke everyone up.
Clarify why I did that. At the time that this was removed from the agenda in September of last year, there were several, there was a lot of conversation about bad timing. We had other things that were more important. And so as chairman at the time, I concluded it was best to wait until we had basically taken care of all the things that people felt more important, and I appreciate that. Pretty much everything that we talked about in September of last year, we've taken care of. There's no outstanding issues for the board to do. And between August 2nd and I guess the end of August, I think this all took place before, the first week of September, every board member emailed myself or the superintendent and requested that that item be on the agenda as a voting item. And our board policy says that if, you know, three, three board members email the superintendent or the board chairman and ask for something to be on the agenda within a year's time, now, I think the language says that if three members within a year's time, our policy's not very clear on this stuff, but it should be added to an agenda. And since it was never on an agenda for action to take place, I felt that before, before September was here, that we should, we should take it up. We have virtually nothing on the agenda right now. So it looks like it'd be a good time for us to bring the policy up for a vote. And that's why I made this motion tonight.
Board members, any other comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
Yeah, and just, I'll start with, so that the public hears what we were talking about, and I was grateful that we were corrected, because we can't talk. What I was saying, I was the one that made the motion to remove the item from the agenda. That's, in fact, what I wanted to do, remove it from the discussion in the September meeting. In that meeting, after I made the motion, it's the job of the chairman to repeat the motion before we vote. In his repeating of the motion, he also stated the consequences were to kill it if we removed it from the agenda. So that was what was, those were the spoken words, perhaps not the written words, but the spoken words, and I watched it a number of times. A couple of times, the chair does say that if you remove it, it kills, kills the policy. But with that being said, my first question is, if we add this policy, we are looking at this policy specifically that the School Board Association wrote, the template. That's cor, that is, is that correct? That's what you're asking to have?
Madam Chair, yes. And the one that we had on the agenda- Madam Chair, yes, I mean, that, the one that we had on the agenda September last year, that, that's, that's what I'm suggesting we have back on the pol- back on the agenda.
Okay, my next question would be, has that policy gone through the channels that a normal policy would go through that the board looks at for a first reading?
Mrs. Agostini would be no.
So, my concerns, and at this point, why I wouldn't support it, there are two reasons. One, in November, there's going to be a new board. I think that should be a decision for the new board to make, whether or not they want to support release time for religious instruction. The other thing, I am not in favor, I would support, however, I'd like to see it delayed again until the new board goes through, for the policy to go through the proper channels that we do with every other board policy, and send it to our advisory coun- advisory councils and, and run it through the channels before we bring the policy to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Nash?
I am slightly confused because we did have where administration, if I'm not mistaken, I believe Nancy Gregory stood up here and talked to us about all of them going and contacting other school districts, what other school districts did, what the impact was, which was research. Am I, am I mistaken that that happened?
Madam Chair, I can address that, that is correct, Ms. Nash, that we did go out and survey other districts to see how they were implementing the policy. What we did not do is follow our normal protocol in which we, when we have a new policy, we take it to different groups, to have our parent group look at it, our teacher forum look at it, we then bring that policy to the board for the board to review for the first reading, and then we'll have the second reading. So we did the first part with the research, but at that point, what we were asked to do was to gather information so that the board could make an informed decision, and that's what Ms. Gregory did. We talked with school districts that have the policy in place, that have been doing this for quite a number of years, and gave the board information so the board could have a discussion around that.
Well, I also have, I, I take slight issue with that because that was not the sentiment that we were told of the reason why people wanted to either remove this, or even that that was something that we wanted to do. We, we had, we heard a lot of reasons, a lot of reasons, a lot of different ones, except for the, that day when we all sat up here, save for one person was not present, every board member said that they would like to see this and have a discussion about this and go forward with this, nobody said, hey, you know what, we also want to go through proper channels, and that the proper channels were gonna be this, 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 and that. And I'll be honest, it feels like there is a consistent runaround when it comes to this, and, I mean, everything else we have done, if it was asked to be put on the agenda, it was put on the agenda. And I know that there were several things, some things that were even more minuscule than this, that were people asked for it to be put on there, and if three people asked for it to be put on there, it appeared on that agenda for discussion. And, and if we do it in a workshop, I'm fine with that, but I don't think that we should keep giving the runaround when three people, more than three people, four people requested this, this be on the agenda, which is our policy, and it is, that is protocol for this board, which is, we are the policymakers.
Oh, that's why. Any other questions or comments? Well, I'll make a comment. Right now, we have not followed the proper protocol, so I am not comfortable as the chair placing that on the agenda when we haven't followed the proper protocol. Normally, when we are getting something for a first reading, and when we're trying to do something of that magnitude, it's always, and many of my colleagues have always said to Dr. Franklin and to others, what did S I C say? What did the parents say? What did the school leadership team say? So, just making sure that we follow proper protocol, and at least that's what I want to do. I don't have an issue with someone bringing this back up, but I'm asking that we do it in the right manner. So because of that, I will not be supporting it until we take the proper channels, and if we do that, I'd be more than happy because I know there are many constituents who would love to see us have this discussion, and I think we do need to have it because if we do have even one community person, to me, one is enough to get that rolling, but we have to do it in decency and in order.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Nash?
What should we make to make this happen? Because this is the runaround that we got before, so if you guys, and we were all willing to do this before and said, well, what would make it where it was something that you all would be even willing to consider because we had over 300 people here just in this room that were asking for this and that were willing to be a part of this, and, and so what do we need to do? You guys tell us, and I asked this question then, I asked it on August 8th, what, what would you guys like us to do? And nobody responded, it was actually just, oh, well, that's the end of the discussion with what happened on August 8th. So you all tell us how you would like to handle this so that we can do it in the way that you all would like.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash, and I think that's a fair question, so I will refer this to Dr. Moore, and she would give us di- direction on how it should be handled. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
When will we know that, and when will we be able to get this started? Well, dates, times?
Well, Ms. Nash, you're asking for a million dollars right now. I can't give that to you.
Okay, well, just.
But what we're going to do, be patient, please. What we're going to do is have Dr. Moore to answer your question, and then we can take steps based on what she shares with us.
Within, I guess.
She's getting ready to share now.
Okay, now, okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Oh, that's your question, okay, yes.
So to answer the question, Madam Chair, the, the way of work is, once we receive a policy, we take that policy to our various stakeholder groups. Those groups meet once a month, some of them meet once a month, some meet once a quarter. And so, we bring that to them, they review it, they give us input on it, then we bring their feedback as well as our feedback to the board chair, and to the board, for the board to have a, a conversation. And so, our next first meetings are not until September, I don't believe we have, have it scheduled yet, but if it's the will of the board, we can try to get those groups together earlier than that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. McFadden?
So, wouldn't we need a policy that, or to take a vote on this to say that we would like to begin that process to do that, and I think that's kinda what, what Mr. Trapp and, and Ms. Nash are saying, that we would need this in order to start that process?
Yes, and Mr. Trapp would have to make that motion because his motion was completely different. That's why I wanted to hear from.
Ma- ma- Madam Chair?
Wait, wait.
I, I just, whenever you have a moment, I do have a question before we make that motion.
Absolutely.
About that process.
Yes, we're getting, okay, give me a second. Okay, Mr. Trapp?
Yeah, yes, I, I am just curious about something. We've had probably, I, I couldn't look on my iPad right now and check, we probably had a dozen, 15 policies passed through us in the last couple of months, so, many of them were, were changes recommended by the South Carolina School Board Association. I'm just wondering how many of those policies went out and went to the various shareholders? Yeah, I think, I was only impressed that most of them just came to us because they came from the School Board Association. The model policy we have has came from the School Board Association. I, I really, I don't think there is a specific list of things that you have to do when a policy is shared by the School Board Association. So I, quite frankly, I, I think the motion has been made to add this to the agenda. We've had a year, if people were concerned about the legitimacy of this program, we've had a year to work on it. I, I think, I think we should vote on this, and if, if you, if you don't want it on the agenda, please vote no, and we're done tonight. If four people vote no, we're done. If three, if four people vote yes, then we'll, we'll have to do some work, won't we? If, that's, thank you.
Ms. Nash? Before we take the vote, Ms. Nash?
Yeah, my, my thing was is that, you know, we go back to what the policy said, part of the policy was, is if in a calendar year, even if it wasn't on there, that if three people asked, we had four people asked for it to be on the agenda, that it had to be appear on the agenda in that calendar year. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, like, there seems to be some conflict even in that.
Well, we can go ahead and take the vote. Ms. Nash, you, Ms. Porter, you need to say something?
Yes, just in case I was one of those people back then, I can't recall, I just would like to go ahead and put it on the record that I'm, I'm not interested in having this discussion. Personally, I, releasing students during our school day, we had someone even communicate about our test scores, and as a former educator, I don't want to release our students in the middle of the school day at this point in time.
Madam Chair, that's not germane.
Mr. Trapp? Yes, it is, she can make her comment, thank you.
Because it was stated, if I vote that I want to have the discussion, that I would vote a certain way, and if I didn't want it, I could vote no, so that's why I'm giving my explanation. But at this point in time, I want our students to stay and be a part of all of their programs that they selected that they're, before coming to school, including their electives. We have some very important electives that support our students' growth and their special interests. I respect every single professional in our buildings, and I don't think it's okay to dismiss, to dismiss any student willingly out of their class once a week, and especially during the time of chronic absenteeism, where we have employed multiple individuals to help us with absenteeism, we're stating that students have to make up time for doctor's appointments and mental health appointments. I'm not going to support releasing our students during this school day during instruction for any course. Thank you.
We're gonna call for the vote. Mr. Trapp, if you could just check. Ms. Washington? Thank you. Mr. Trapp, check the motion and see if it's correct, please?
It should, it should say, I move that we add a first reading of policy J H C B. Oh, does, okay, okay, okay. I don't usually read to the end, I'm sorry. I'm not afraid to admit that. Yes, that looks good.
Okay, board members, please vote. Okay, the motion is three yes, four no, the motion fails. We're going to move on to policy, I'm, I'm sorry, to item 11.0, public participation. We don't have anyone signed up. Also, for 12.0, executive session continue, we don't have to do that, or 13.0, voting to resume public session, we're not there, or 14.1, voting on executive session items. So we will move to 15.0, board and superintendent comments?
Madam Chair, if, if I, if, if I could interrupt you for just a sec, we, we, I don't think we finished the, the agenda, if, if, there may have been, there was one thing I want, another thing I wanted to add to the agenda that was less controversial.
So, okay, Mr. Trapp.
I move to add to the August 27th, 24 regular board meeting, a conference report by all those that have attended conferences over the last month.
Pardon? I'm, I'm not sure what you're adding that to the agenda because board members have the opportunity to share that during their time at the end for board and superintendent comments, so I'm not sure why we would want to add conference time to a board agenda.
We had done that in the past, but it don't, it don't matter to me, I just, we've had a lot of people go to conferences, and we did have that as a separate agenda item a few times last year.
Right, I, I just think we need to just stick to the motion of what's going on in our schools and do the business of the board. The conference is the business of the board, but that's not anything, in my opinion, that should be added to an agenda. Feel free to share, you know, tidbits from the conference, that's what we want, but to add that to a board agenda, I'm not sure, but if that's the motion you would like to make, feel free to do that, and if we have a second, we'll take a vote, but I really just don't understand that when we have board and superintendent comments, and that's when you get a chance to share, if you so choose, about a conference, but to spend 15, 20, 30 minutes of our time to hear from four, five, six board members when we've had district office staff here all day, I, I just don't see the benefit of that. But, again, we would take a motion.
That was the motion, if so, and if we don't do it, that's fine too, I just, if someone wants a second, we can talk about it.
So, that motion has been moved by Mr. Trapp to add school board conference information, if they would like to share, to the next agenda meeting, and it's been seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mrs. McFadden?
Um, so, Joe, did you want to say something?
No, if I just may, make one comment real quick, several months ago, I, and, and Dr. Moore can correct me if I'm wrong, but we did discuss having, that the district spends an enormous amount of money sending us to conferences, and they, and, and we had decided that anytime we had a conference and board members came back, we wanted to give everyone a couple of minutes to share things they had learned at the conference, and we did that a time or two, I can look it up if I need to, but, but we've done that in the past, if we don't want to do it now, that's fine, but that's the reason I brought that up, it's been on the agenda in the past.
Mr. Chair, and, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Trapp, you're absolutely correct. Anytime we attend a workshop or conference, we have the opportunity to come back and share, but to add it to the agenda, I just don't understand the logic behind that. But, again, the motion is made and seconded, we can take a vote on that. Miss, you need to say something, Ms. McFadden? Go ahead, Ms. McFadden?
Policy B I A, B I B, New Member Orientation Board Member Development Opportunities, it states that the district budget will include money for travel expenses for individual members to advance their development as school board members. When the full board does not attend a conference, convention, or workshop, those who do participate will be requested to share information, recommendations, and materials acquired at that meeting.
Fadden, you're absolutely correct, but it doesn't say add it to the agenda and spend another 10, 15, 20 minutes of board member sharing, and once again, you know, I, I'm thinking about these people, our district office staff, our employees, and even people who have come here, they've been here all day, and for board members to want to share about the conference, you can do that during your comments, that's what the purpose of board comments, that's the purpose of it. Share about great schools you have attended, share about conferences or workshops, but to add it to the agenda, doesn't make sense to me, doesn't matter if it makes sense to me. What matters is the vote, so I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote.
Madam Chair?
Oh, I, I do apologize, I didn't realize we still had two. Mrs. Porter, and then Mrs. Agostini, I'll come to you.
Yes, Madam Chair, I just, I had planned to share some comments about the SC Law Conference this evening during my comments, I just wanna make sure that that's okay, is that appropriate time, or should I be holding it for next week, because I don't want to have nothing to report, but I was planning on sharing those comments tonight, so.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Mrs. Agostini?
And I, I concur with Dr. Scott, I'd love to hear briefly about people's meetings in the closing remarks, but not to set aside a time in the agenda for it.
Dr. Scott?
Yes, Mrs. McFadden?
So, I, when I go to conferences, I've been to, I just got back from one in Orlando for safety and security, I went to New York to do the AI presentation, and they have a wealth of information, and I did a couple of presentations before, it's very difficult to get all that information in to a, a two-minute, three-minute board comment, so I enjoy making the presentation and bringing back those things that I've learned, because if you go for a week, which the district pays for me to go for that amount of time, there's a lot of information that we are learning that I would love to share and get out there, not just to board members, but to show what we're looking at and what other, other states are doing, states that are the top 10%, we're in the bottom five. So if we want to really move our district forward, we need to start looking at what are the top 10 schools doing, and try to, to see where we can implement some of those things here. So I enjoy sharing it, and I did mention it to you that I wanted to do a presentation at the end of September for that, so if you guys don't mind, I will be doing my presentation. Other people don't want to, that's up to them, but I will be adding mine to the agenda. And that's not gonna be a vote, I don't think, because it's a, a presentation for, for something that the district has paid me to do to go and see, so I appreciate that.
Just for clarification, Mrs. McFadden, you will be doing that presentation if it is approved by the board chair, so we will have that discussion, but I'm going to go ahead and call. So we will have that discussion. But I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote, please. Mr. Trapp, would you check to make sure that's your motion, please?
Yes, that's correct.
And just for point of clarification, it says to add school board conference report. Is that for all of the board members who have actually attended this conference? Or for only those who would like to share? Because I know some of you guys attended a conference and some have not. So I want, just for clarity, just for those who want to share.
What we did a few months ago is anyone that wished to share, what they, we had it on the agenda. And that's what I was suggesting we do, because I was under the impression that's what we wanted to do, and it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because there are some board members who choose not to do that. And I want to make sure that they are not being forced with this motion. Okay, let's call for the vote, please. The vote is two yes, five no, the vote fails. Moving on to 5.0, board and superintendent comments. I'll start with Mrs. Nash.
Okay, I had different comments, so I'm going to give a little bit of, we'll start with the, what I wasn't going to say. I wasn't aware, well, I didn't know I was going to say this. In regards to release time, and I'm going to just say it, there's things that we still have to resolve on that. Because the policy still states that it's supposed to show up on a calendar year on the calendar, if three people asked for it, four people did. And so I hope that we see that on there, whether it's on a workshop or what, but to begin that work. And I don't want it to be misinterpreted what release time is. It is not missing class. You actually can get a credit for it. And for those students who want to have some form of religious studies, who may even go into ministry one day, it is an opportunity for them, and we do not need to leave out the most important of stakeholders, which is those children's parents and their right to allow them to attend a class that they so deem fit for their child. Okay, now for the highlight fun stuff. I had the opportunity to go to the law conference, and, not the law conference, the Safety and Security Conference in Orlando. And it was great. There were a lot of like things that I learned. And I'm excited to talk about those things in the Safety and Security Meeting that we have coming up pretty soon. And so I'll be able to share some of those things. And I hope the community will come out to those meetings. Because part of us, the reason we have a Safety and Security Committee is so that we can bridge the gap with the community. So I hope you guys will come out for that, so I can share about all the the things that we saw. And I will say that I was very impressed, because a lot of the things that they had and they talked about there, we are implementing here already. Of course, there's, you know, safety changes every single day. And so being at the forefront of that is always super important. So I was really excited about that. But other than that, I hope you all had a really, really great summer, and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you, Dr. Scott. First of all, thank you. Well, I was going to say, Mrs. Washington, I was going for your name first, for bringing Tyler here to give the inspirational moment. And I wrote down his embrace your inner child and let your dreams run wild, which was segueing into my next part, because he was spectacular. But I had the opportunity to go to Paris and track this. My cousin's daughter was the goalie for the U.S. National Field Hockey Team. So she participated in Paris, and I'm getting goosebumps thinking of the the young child in their Olympic dream. But what a remarkable experience to go watch the athletes. But I wanted to share with you some of my takeaways. The field hockey team, the gratitude of the athletes after the games. Both teams ran all the way around the field, stopping at different sections to thank the spectators for coming out and watching them and supporting them. The two gymnasts, the silver and bronze medalists, who bowed down in unrespect to the gold medal winner. The compassion and the hugging from the judo participants after their, I want to say, sort of beating each other up. But at the conclusion of each match, you saw them embrace, and it was genuine and authentic. The pride of the French cheering on Leon Marchand. He's the gold medal swimmer. I'm a swimmer. It was thrilling. I watched him win the 200 butterfly. I watched him win the 200 breaststroke gold medal rounds. And I did also see Katie Ledecky win the 1500 meter swim. But speaking about Katie Ledecky, her mentorship, for those that watched when she won the 800 meter freestyle. And she pulled up bronze medalist Paige Madden to stand with her on the top podium as they played the National Anthem. And then finally, and I will say this for my, Mrs. McFadden said, just call her your niece. But anyhow, the field hockey team did well. They were ranked 10th, they got ninth. There was some disappointment in some of the games. But I think the most impressionable part that I saw was all athletes didn't have a great day. But they were able to let it go and to watch them celebrate and smile and realize at the closing ceremonies that they belong to a club, that so many want to, but it's so seclusive, they are Olympians. And it was just what a treat it was to watch the human experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Mr. Trapp?
Thank you. Before I make my comments, I would like to read from our February 22nd, 2025, February 27th, 2024 regular board meeting, item 10.5, five board member conference updates. I'll be honest, I I the contempt for me, members of this board sometimes is a little overwhelming. We had this in the past, but yet I was just ridiculed for bringing it up to have it at the next board meeting. Now, having said that, I have spent the last month here stateside visiting schools. It was my privilege to attend the summer school graduation and congratulate all of our students that worked so hard this summer to graduate from high school, and I wish them the best. It was also myself and Dr. Moore attended the USC Power Forward Program Kickoff, sponsored by Darla Moore School of Business. I believe we have 36 scholars in that program. And it's a great opportunity for them to move there, to do things that will advance their career one day. Also, the first day of school, I had the privilege to meet two of our new principals. I I started the morning out at our bus depot, talking with the bus drivers. Then went to Condor Elementary and was then able to go to Bethel-Hambury and meet our new principal there, as well as Blythewood High School and Westwood High School. And it was a great, great opportunity to meet the students and see people there. We have a lot of wonderful staff. The last thing I would like to add, and this, I'm speaking specifically to our faculty and staff this weekend when I was in the hotel at the conference. I somehow managed to muster up strength to complete the mandatory training that all district staff are required to do. It was about two and a half hours of, well, it was, you know what it is, I don't have to tell you. And I'll admit that I had to take the Ferbit test or evaluation twice. But I did pass it a second time. I I did get 100 on the workplace safety, because I run a safe workplace, okay? That was that was easy. Anyway, it it was a great opportunity. Let me take just a moment to talk about the law conference. And I'll just, I'll just say one thing that I I learned in one of the sessions. And this was in a session where one of the attorneys for the School Board Association answered a few questions. And at the 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 last part of the last answer was some of the things that the state has, the laws that the state has passed, as well as federal guidelines. We were told we have to basically do risk management. We have to determine which law, which regulation we want to pass policies to be in line with. So in a nutshell, there are districts in the state, and I hope we're not one of them, but we're in a position where they could either lose federal or state funding, because those two entities don't agree on how we should do things. And I thought it was very sad, but that was a, that was a very sobering thing to take away from the conference. But it was a very good learning experience the entire weekend. Appreciate the opportunity to go. And that's all I have. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Mrs. McFadden?
First of all, welcome back to school, everyone. I know that we have started, in my household, kids are back on schedule, getting up, going to bed on time. It was a struggle, because they got excited about not going to school on Thursday and then right back on Friday. So welcome back, teachers. I want to say congratulations to my sister. It's her first year teaching this year. She's really excited. She's been in the district for five years, though, but finally committed last year. And to my daughter, she's a senior this year. This is her last year with us. And I've got two more in high school, so it's a full-on for us in our household. But I want to say to the parents, remember the attendance protocol. I know that when I went to visit schools, the teachers were really hemming that in, and they were really talking about making sure that that you attend those classes for seat time and things like that. But there are, we do have the competency-based program started. And I think that we should probably go back over that a little bit more, just so that we understand exactly what that covers and what it does not cover. So I will also address right now, we did get an email about, and some emails for teachers and their paychecks. It's okay. District staff is handling it. It will be there. I know I work for, I know I work for a company, and I've never had a late check. It's there on time. I can bet money on it. So we're moving teachers, just be patient with us, to make sure that that we're getting there. We have a whole turnover. We're working on it. And I wanted to address it, because I got a lot of information about it and some questions. But just be patient with our staff as we're as we're pouring this out. Another one is the cell phones. There's a policy coming out, parents, be prepared. We don't know exactly what it's going to be, but I did ask Dr. Moore for an update that's coming. So we're going to do our best. January 1st is go, go time. So get yourself prepared. We don't know what we're doing at the district. We do have a cell phone policy. However, the state is coming out with something different for us, and we're going to follow up on that soon. But I think that's all I have. Again, welcome back to the new school year. And half a dress code policy has been changed. I was at Spring Valley, and they've put posters up. So if you go stand by the poster and it doesn't match, or you got something extra on, please just take it off, leave it at home the next time. Enjoy your school year, and we'll be here.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Mrs. Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to say, welcome back to all of our students, our faculty, and our staff. Thank you, Muller Road and CFK North, and to Blythewood Academy for having me on your first day of school. I'm excited to visit classrooms. I cannot wait. And I definitely cannot wait to attend some Cavalier football games. I have great expectations for all of our faculty, staff, and our students this year, and for our superintendent and our board. To all of my Marigolds, let's thrive, let's be resilient, let's be bright, and let's spread joy. And most importantly, y'all, let's get to work and let's create opportunities for all of our students to chase their wildest dreams. Welcome back, Richland 2, and have a wonderful rest of your first full week of school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Do appreciate that. And Mrs. Porter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say thank you to Tyler, who came out earlier today. I was admiring his Letterman's jacket. I don't know about you all, but I, his jacket was fly. The mine, the ones that we had when I was at Spring Valley didn't look as nice as that one. So I'm not sure if he designed it himself or what, but it had a little bit of extra on it. I really liked that. So let him know, Ms. Washington. Also, thank you to Center for Achievement and Kelly Mill Middle and Lake Carolina Lower for having me on your first day of school. And Mr. Strata, who joined me, thank you so much. Center for Achievement, I learned so much about the personalized learning there and the strides that they have made in in that area, and they were very impressive. Also, the Kelly Mill staff, they came in up and running. They were so excited. I felt like they were all talking really fast because of their excitement. And I wanted to go into every room, but couldn't. And then also, Lake Carolina Lower, thank you for the welcome home. I saw a lot of friendly faces and familiar faces, and it was nice to walk those halls again. And also, I I observed what you should observe in the first week. And that was our students' learning procedures in the first week, learning, building relationships with their teachers and each other. It was, it was really nice to see and to see all of the joy in our schools. I also wanted to share about the South Carolina School Boards Association Law Conference this weekend. I enjoyed having conversations with other board members from other districts. Also, some time to also have conversations with our superintendent and and go into multiple sessions about the laws that have changed, the deadlines in which things need to be enacted. I took many, many notes. And for my colleagues, if you would like all of my notes, just let me know. I will download them in a PDF. But I wanted to speak specifically about some conversations that I had when I attended the Caucus for Black School Board Members on Friday. That was our first evening there. And there was a a conversation that was had about statistics and key issues facing black K through 12 students in South Carolina and closing the achievement gap. And some things that just motivated me from that session was, what we're, what are we doing as board members to improve the access to advanced courses? It was interesting to have this meeting and also talk about our magnet programs, but looking at the statistics of how many students aren't being able to access their AP courses and dual enrollment programs and the prerequisites that may be involved to get into those courses. And also, what are the barriers to that access? And what can we do to prepare our students so that they can achieve in those courses? I know many of our graduates last year were able to pass their AP exams and get college credits. And so I want to ensure that all students have the ability to be in these classes, including our leveled classes within middle school. I'm seeing some great disparities in math, and I know that we've discussed math last year and in depth. But across the state, we're seeing the same thing, and it came up. And it was, they asked us to brainstorm different ideas of what we can do as policymakers to to help in this endeavor and making sure that we have a diverse group of students in our AP courses and advanced courses and dual enrollment programs. And one of the brainstorming ideas that came out was the IGP meeting that takes place in eighth grade, possibly having something similar in fifth grade or sixth grade with their counselors about their future and what courses they could be enrolled in. And not only that, the waiver that parents can waive students into leveled courses, even though they had a bad day taking a test. And so those were things that had driven our discussions about even our partnerships and what people can do outside of school, after school, and possibly even on Sundays, to ensure that you have the audience there to talk about those opportunities and those prerequisites. So I could go on more and more, but I'm going to save it for another time. Thank you so much, and happy 2024, 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Mrs. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I am very excited. As everybody knows, I get very excited about the beginning of school. But before I start talking about the school year, I do want to celebrate the graduation that Mr. Trapp brought up. We had an awesome summer graduation and the largest group of students who have now successfully completed high school and have now the key to unlock the gate of opportunity. And so I am so excited for those students. And I want to give a very special thank you to Mr. Cunningham and our adult education program that comes alongside these students and helps them cross the finish line. Not everyone is on the same timeline, and that's okay, because the most important thing is that they cross the finish line. And so I appreciate that. And Tyler did encourage us to embrace our inner child. And so I got to do a little bit of that as a part of our convocation. And so I would say to anyone that has not watched our convocation, you can watch it online. It was a great event in our brand-new Performing Arts Center, which still has lots of things that have to get done. But thank you to our operations team that made it happen that we could get in there for that event. And that, we talked about Marigolds. So if you want to know if you're a Marigold, watch the convocation. So if you want to know if you're a Marigold, watch the convocation. And a special thank you to Teresa, who wrote the speech for me, even though I went off script. That's my inner child. And then, as if that wasn't enough, I have a short 35-second video to celebrate our first week of school. As a part of my inner child, I got to ride the school bus and be a student transportation monitor. They wouldn't let me drive, not like Mr. Trapp in the old days, but I got to get off the bus and greet parents and students at the bus stop. It was fabulous. First day of school, we had 27,676 students. They're, they were transported by our fully-staffed transportation team. Although we did start one hour late, thanks to Tropical Storm Debbie, it was a fabulous day. I saw students smiling, teachers smiling, parents smiling and crying, and principals and administrators smiling. There was a buzz and an excitement in the air. And I had the vis, the privilege of being that student transportation monitor on the bus that was going to Condor. So I visited Condor, EL Wright, Richland Northeast, and Forest Lake Elementary School. And the best part of our visits is I got to go with our school board chairwoman and talk to students in the classroom, and they thought that Dr. Elkin Scott and I must be very important, because we had a whole lot of people following us around, and they were whispering, well, who are they? Because they had, they got to see our chairwoman and myself visiting them. So I just have to say to everyone that made that day, first day in the first week of school, thank you so much. I know it was challenging with the storm, and while we did have to have one day off, it still worked out to be a great first week of school, and I am just so excited to have everybody back in the building. So thank you very much for what you do every single day for our students, because we are purpose-driven, so they are future-ready.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. And many of my colleagues have shared some of the things that I was going to share, but I will say to Tyler, Mrs. Washington, you guys have a star on your hands. So Tyler, your future is really big, and I should have gotten your autograph before you gotten too big, so I want to make sure I do that. But I want to say to our faculty and staff, our teachers, our custodian staff, our SROs, welcome back. Thank you for all that you do. And one thing I do want to share, I was over at Lonnie B. Nelson, and I went into a first grade room, because if you know, I'm a former first grade teacher as well, so anytime I visit elementary school, they always know exactly where to take me. So as I was talking with some of the students in the first grade class, one in particular had an interest and a whole list of questions, as if she was waiting for you, Dr. Moore, but I showed up. So as we were going through those questions, one thing I said to her, once we finished, I said, well, just know that I work for you. She said, you work for me? I said, I do. She said, well, then you need to give me your phone number. I don't have it. So her principal just thought that was it, and I looked at her, and she said, wait a minute, let me get a pen. And gosh, she really took down my phone number and my name, and I think she shared it with her parent to make sure I didn't give her a fake number, and she called me. So you know what? It just goes to say, be genuine and kind when you say things, because you never know when people are going to hold you accountable. Many times, as adults especially, we'll say to people, well, call me if you need anything. We don't really want them to call. So I'm so glad that that young lady has already gotten that instilled in her, to hold people accountable. So I do think that, and again, I want to just thank everyone for coming out. I had an opportunity to visit 15 of our schools on the first day, and my goal is to make sure that I get to every school within the next two weeks, so I'm looking forward to that. Again, I always tell people, teaching is in my DNA. You guys have a good night. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the August 27, 2024 Regular Board Meeting. I'm sorry, August 13.
I know, right? The motion has been made to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? If not, board members, please vote, and we'll take a hand vote.
All in favor?
All in favor? Seven yes, zero no. The meeting is adjourned.